Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ketchikan Chamber of Commerce's Candidate Forum for City Council Candidates. Really appreciate you coming out and certainly do appreciate the hospitality of the folks at The Landing for hosting us. And really do appreciate this enormous group of candidates. Thanks to everyone this year for all offices that have stepped up to serve our community. Let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll rise and join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A quick few rules of the road for our candidates. Please say your name prior to each and every answer, because this is being broadcast live on KTKN, and they would like to know who's speaking. And for those in the audience here listening, there are three seats, three-year terms, each available, and eight candidates, and one one-year term with three candidates running. A total of 11 candidates are running. Now, the questions today have been -- are you correcting me? Two-year terms, sorry. Sorry about that. Now, the questions today have been submitted by members of the public. The Chamber of Commerce specifically lengthened this forum due to the large number of candidates. If we happen to have some time at the end of the forum, we might have some time for questions from the audience. But due to general sound considerations for our radio and television friends, we don't like to do that, because it's really hard for them to see audience members who are asking questions. With that being said, the lovely Catherine Tetsuda from the Ketchikan Radio Center will be indicating when you are halfway through your time by raising the yellow card. Halfway. And when you are done, and we mean done, she'll raise the orange card. Okay, so we're going to start down here with Mr. Keifer. And the first question is pretty simple. Why are you running for city council? Now, if you're running for reelection, why are you choosing to serve again? And if you're a candidate who has not yet served, why are you choosing to run now?
And this is two minutes, yes.
My name's Dave Keifer, and I feel like I'm not done yet. In fact, my name's Dave Keifer, and I'm running for the three-year seat. And I feel like I'm not really done yet, like I just started. We just had a lengthy meeting last night, and I learned a lot more things last night to make it possible to do this job even better. You know, growing up in Ketchikan, I heard a lot of people grumbling about this or that or the other thing. I came from a family of grumblers. We used to sit there and say, "Why'd that person do that? Why'd that person do whatever?" The reality was, it's easy to sit around and not get involved, and not put yourself out there, and not try to make the town better. And it's always been my job, in my time on the council, in my time at the borough, to leave Ketchikan a better place than I found it. And that's why I'm running again. Thank you.
My name's Riley Gass. Why I'm running, born and raised in Ketchikan, plan to stay here the rest of my life, and I care about the future. Absolutely love Ketchikan, and similar to what Dave said, you always hear people grumbling and rumbling, and I talked to so many people where I hear the same concern, so I figured it's time to quit grumbling and try and get involved. So I don't have a lot of political experience, but I know the will of the people at Ketchikan, and I'm determined to represent them. Get right down to it, the number-one issue facing our community, from what I hear, up to 30 years, is the port, and I think it's an absolutely critical decision that's got to be made. We've got to keep control of our port local, so that's going to be my number-one focus. Get involved, do all I can, have a good influence. A little more about me. I'm a big supporter of the police. I've heard some things about our police and such that kind of were alarming to me, so that's another reason why I'd like to get involved. That's, I guess, about it. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Grant Echohawk, and I'm running for the two-year seat. And the reason why I want to get involved, and the reason why I'm running for office is for two primary reasons. One, is I do have the business sense to make good business decisions. It comes from years of working for one of the largest corporations in the country, and then locally working as a regional manager here at one of the local financial institutions. So I know that a lot of what we need to accomplish right now is going to be centered around making good decisions, around taking a look at the information, making sure that we are, when it comes to our economy, and I know several of the folks here with me today, we're on the Southeast Conference webinars this week, and the economy and the things that are impacting it are going to be something, is going to impact us for years to come. So we need to make sure that not only do we have good philosophical points of view about what to do, but we actually have practical suggestions, practical applications, and are able to make the decisions to lead us not only through the air of COVID-19, but into prosperity, and that comes from having the business knowledge to do it. The other reason why is because I have a commitment to my community. I run a nonprofit that is a community-based nonprofit. I'm involved in local nonprofits here in town. I do have a commitment to my community and making sure that, again, it's not about saying things like, "Okay, I will listen to the community, I will hear what they have to say," but actually, really, listening, meeting the people where they're at, and listening to the concerns that they have, because that's the only way that we're going to make sure that our community is as strong as it can be. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for everyone coming. My name is Mary Stevenson. I am a two-year seat for city council. I'm 72 years old, and I bring from the outside world a lot of experience, that is both in legal and executive secretary-type positions in the San Francisco Financial District and also the Police Department. I'm also a professional organizer, and I can take a house, a garage, or an office and have it completely organized by the time we leave and achieve that goal. That is constantly on my mind. How can I tweak? How can I improve? And subsequently, my five years, six years with Ketchikan, going before council with new ideas, I never got a show of four hands. I never got it taken to the next level. And I'd always question why. Isn't that where I'm supposed to have five minutes to present my ideas? And it never went anywhere. There's a lot of unfinished business out there, and that's what I hope to accomplish. Second of all, I'm very encouraged to see we're turning a 25-year mark, and we're going to be able to go out and find new management. This city desperately needs to find a city manager, a port director who is qualified in disaster or crisis management, and also start being more equipped to handle global port management. I'm here tonight because I have values that I think I can offer back to the council. At my age, I think I can serve the community. I want to go out and engage them, and I'm very encouraged to seek your vote. Thank you very much.
What was that? When it's time, almost, there's no --
It did sound like an alarm.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. You wrapped up very nicely.
All right. Thank you.
Grant, silence our folks, please.
Hi, my name is Joey Jean Telson. I am running for the three-year council position, one of three positions. The reason that I chose to do this was just because that's primarily what I've been doing my whole life, is looking out for the underdog, looking out and taking care. I'm a caretaker. I believe in research, being informed, providing resources, accurate information versus verbal jargon and opinions and influences by, you know, people's personal shareholder staking on that. I believe in facts, and that's primarily what I've been doing my whole life. And as a mother of two daughters, I've built myself up from nothing to being a homeowner and college graduate, and constantly looking for ways to improve myself, my children, my community, because what it boils down to is that, you know, as somebody mentioned last night, Dion Booth, at the council meeting, I'm not going to be here forever. You know, I'm an older person, but my children are, and that's important to me. So that's primarily the type of person I am. I look for information, research, accuracy, facts, and then make a determination that's for the greater good of my community and my family. And that's what I'm here for today.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Scarborough. I'm a 39-year resident in Ketchikan, grew up here, left, came back, planned to die here, hopefully in my bed, preferably. Been married 38 years, the love of my life, Donald. I've spent the last 25, 27 years working with nonprofits in our community, hoping to bring a little bit different perspective to the city council. I've been thinking about this and praying about this for the last 12, 14 years, and it just seemed to be the year. I have a lot to learn. There are a lot of issues the city is dealing with that I don't have any kind of insight or information on. So I don't come with any preconceived conceptions of what needs to be done, but I'm collaborative, and I want to work together to make Ketchikan the best place to live, because I love to be here, and we have a wonderful community.
Abby Bradbury, I'm running for the three-year term. I arrived in Ketchikan as a visitor in 2011 and absolutely fell in love with this community. I moved here the following summer after I graduated college, and I've been here ever since. This community has given me a career, life, a home, family, and friends, and it's time for me to give back to the community that gave me everything to bring me to where I'm at. I'm running for city council on two general topics. The first one is it's time for younger generations to get involved and step up and start helping shape the future that we're going to be dealing with in the next 20, 30, 40 years. And I'm hopeful to encourage younger people to get involved and to bring ideas and solutions to the table. On the other side, I believe I can bring experience in creating a proper balance between tourism and the community, diversifying the economy, working on cost of living, and just being there for the citizens and businesses and trying to help get your ideas, your concerns, your solutions brought forth to the table. I too have been in a situation kind of like Mary, where I've had to be on the other side, and it's not the easiest to get through to the city council or to achieve what you want to achieve, so I really want to step in there and try to help alleviate that with other people or other businesses. My work experience, I'm logistics and operations manager for Lumberjack Show. My whole job is planning for the future and executing that, so I think I can bring that aspect of working on long-term goals and trying to find a solution now versus waiting till, you know, five years too late and putting us in difficult situations. I'm boots-on-the-ground, ready-to-go, do the hard work, roll up my sleeves, and do whatever's needed to get something to move forward in the right direction for the community.
I'm Dick Coos. I guess I'm running for the three-year term. A lot of people ask me why. Pretty good question, but I think I've served a number of terms now. I've done a very good job of working for the city, for the citizens. I listen to them, try to use a little common sense with it. You get the facts. And you set the policy, you set the budget, and the budget's one of the bigger things. We've got some discussions going on about a big deal in town right now, but I guarantee you that's small compared to what you've got to deal with in the long run. It'll work out, the big ones work out. I work very simply, using common sense, getting facts, physically responsible. I listen to the public, and we do not get enough public input. A number of people will complain about not being listened to. They're listened to, but it's only if you get a big issue up there or we raise the taxes, then we hear about it. But you need to come and talk quicker. You need to talk to us whenever the budget is up, because that's the most important thing you'll deal with. The city has to be citizen-friendly and business-friendly. Right now, we've got a lot of regulations that get enforced, and I know a number of businesses that'll say, "Why did I get into this mess in the first place?" We need to look at our regulations and try to be more business-friendly. There's a lot of business decisions, there are a lot of decisions ahead of us right now. All of them are underway. I think all of them are going to have an outcome that the public will eventually be pleased with. It's just a matter of getting through the governmental nonsense, if I can use the right word. The port management, the hospital lease, the solution for water filtration, they're all going to happen. But like you, my home has been here for the last four decades. I've got family here, great-grandkids in school. And as an American, I enjoy my freedom. I support Ketchikan. I believe it's the best place to be living in the United States right now. You ain't do that to me. I'm the senior, don't I have any rights?
Good evening, my name's Spencer Strasberg. Oh, wait, no, sorry.
You got big shoes.
Good evening, my name's Mark Flora. I'm running for the two-year city council seat. I'm one of those people that wasn't born here but got here as soon as I could. I think that's the coolest Blueberry Festival shirt that I wish I would've got, one of those. I'm married, I have two adult children, one who lives locally and one who's down south. I got two granddaughters. I've been almost always self-employed since the age of 22, so I think I have a very good fundamental understanding of the needs of business and the challenges that businesses in our community face. I'm running for the two-year seat because there's a lot of undone work that we're in the middle of, really big projects, the port, the hospital, the budgets every year, that's going to go on forever. I feel like we have some major issues that need to be taken to conclusion, and then I'd like to be done. I'll impose my own term limit, and I won't go any more beyond these two years if I'm I think one of the biggest guiding principles that I've imposed upon myself in my time at the council is the objective representation of everybody in the community. I'll talk to people at A&amp;P, I'll talk to people at the post office, people walk into my shop regularly. I'll always make the time, I'll always listen, I'll tell you what I think. It's not a popularity contest, but I'll do the work, and I hope for your support. Thank you.
The real Spencer Strasberg. I started running for this five years ago, and I guess maybe because I like business and I don't like bullies. And I felt like we were being bullied on a vote, and that's what sucked me into the game of politics, where I don't really think I belong. I'm an extremely transparent person, and I realize that that's probably no place for politics, really, and that's why we're always constantly, as voters, were screaming for transparency. I know I fought with these guys a whole bunch up here in the last five years, and I don't really want to fight with people. Today, I'm 53 years old, and I really'd like to put my gloves down someday. I've been fighting with people my whole life. I usually try to fight for good causes. I generally find myself standing up for the person who's being bullied all the time. And I really felt like I was bullied out of this. All I've ever wanted to do was try to bring some business leadership to the council, because I see mistakes that are being made all the time, just basic business rules, and they're really, really common stuff, and that's why we need some new leadership. I think that our public has probably kind of lost confidence in this board, and that's why we see 11 of us up here now. Before, I've never seen anyone stand up here with me. I've done all this hard work for five years, while most of them are just getting in here. I appreciate that, because this will be my last time I'll be up here for city council run. I'm only going to put so much energy, and if people said to me, "Hey, we want you in there," but if I can't make it happen in a vote, then this system isn't for me. I have business talents that I need to express all over. It's just in my brains, going all the time. I'm not the best businessman, I don't claim to be, but I just have that running through my brain all the time, and I'd like to offer it to our city to try to help us, but I've got to go now.
Good evening. I'm not a great public speaker, but I'm Jay Matani. I'm running for the three-year seat. I have been in Ketchikan year-round for 25 years. The reason why I'm running for the three-year seat, I promise strive to bring equality, total equality, total transparency, transparency, transparency. It's not just a word to harp on, it's something to be done, and up to last night, we saw there's no transparency. I want to think out of the box and make sure the community is taken into account every step of the way, not just hearsay, listening to them and acting for them, to make decisions objectively. I mean, we're not going to make everybody happy, things are not going to happen overnight, but thinking out of the box and working with a team. Major corporations succeed because they have a great team leading them. So I want to be part of a great team to bring the city forward for the children, for the future generations. I'm 61, I won't be here. The other aspect of it is protecting our ports for our kids, protecting our ports for people like Austin and their kids. We'll be gone. We cannot be making a decision for 20 years or 30 years and sticking them with that. Protect our ports, they belong to the future generations and the future of Ketchikan. They belong to seniors, they belong to middle-aged Ketchikanians, they belong to young Ketchikanians, they belong to Ketchikanians that are not born yet. Okay? And diversifying the economy. I mean, you have economy, tourism, before it was lumber, some fishing, which is going down, just protecting the economy. Thank you.
Okay, the next question will be a one-minute answer period, and to segue off your previous question and answers. What is your personal experience with major fiscal budgets, and how does that translate into your possible role on the city council? And we'll start with you.
Well, my major experience with budgets is the most important one, my personal one. I'm only 25, I don't have a lot of world experience, but I do have a couple rentals I run. Got them on a real tight budget, real tight budget. Was fortunate enough to be able to get a couple of good loans, and I've had to really cross my Ts and dot my Is to make my payments. You know how it goes. My rentals are not, they weren't exactly first class when I got them, so I got to factor in maintenance and all that. And so far, so good. I've been able to save a little, put a little aside. I plan to get a few more. And I've got plenty of ideas for the future, but I think one thing I said before is, we got to manage the government just like we manage our own personal budgets. You don't spend more than you make, you think for the future, you put a little bit aside. So that's going to be certainly really tough during this economic crisis, but we got to look at the long term, and the best way to do that is look at keeping those ports working for us for 30 years. Thanks. Oh, Riley Gass.
Grant Echohawk, again, we're two-year seat. So my experience comes from working in business and for running my nonprofit. Working in business, I've managed massive teams. We had, you know, we had budgetary restrictions that we had to adhere to, we had goals that we had to meet, we had, you know, when you're working for a large corporation, the name of the game is maximizing shareholder value. That was the number one, that's what we had to do. But to do that, you had to run your business well. You had to take care of your employees, you had to take care of your customers, and you had to meet budget deadlines and budget constraints. Then on my nonprofit, you know, the budget really determines the type of programs we can implement, the type of community involvement we can get to. And so pretty much my entire experience is about meeting those deadlines, meeting those goals, and making sure that we make fiscal responsibility at the forefront of everything we do.
Mary Stevenson, two-year city council seat. I have been a bookkeeper on Daydream Island in Australia. I've also been a CEO of a record, I am a record producer. I've created three albums with the help of Capital Records. I had to do a $1.2 million budget over the course of 11 years and selling 200,000 records. I've also been topping my sales for online computer payroll systems. So marketing, payroll, doing all sorts of budget. I'm senior citizen, I live on social security, $900 a month, that's it. I have no pension, so what the debit card has is all I can spend. So where I'm going with that budget, when I look at it, I'm going to look at where are the pennies so that we can find the dollars that we can start budgeting. Thank you much.
Joey Jean Telson, three-year seat. So my background is, I'm the union chapter president, and so we do audits yearly for that. The VFW auxiliary president, we do audits for that. Was charter school in Juneau, I was the auditor, budgetary person there. I was a property owner, rental landlord for 19 years, 2000 to 2019. I also ran my own cleaning business. I used to drive for Uber for two years, and so I had to pay my taxes, I had to do all the budgetary, fiscally smart, savvy stuff there, and all of that had to do with my degree with business management, and I've got five different mathematical things regarding that. And that's all you need to know for now. Thank you, bye.
I'm Lisa Scarborough, I'm running for a three-year seat. I didn't mention that earlier. We need to balance the budget, that's the bottom line. We can't spend more than we make. I have managed a nonprofit or directed a nonprofit the last 15 years, which has grown from like $60,000 to a couple hundred thousand dollars in the last 15 years. And we're just, you know, that's pretty much all there is to it. I don't have any big financial background. I've been bookkeeper for 30 years, but I can balance the budget, and that's what we need to do.
Abby Bradbury, three-year term. I will be honest, I have never done a $200 million budget. I'll just put that out there. But besides my personal one, growing up here, was starting a career of having nothing when I arrived. Feel like I'm doing all right now. Well, pre-COVID, all right. Through COVID, I've had a huge amount of experience come from having to take a budget down from the, you know, every frills of everything you wanted and everything that you've made, down to what is a necessity to keep your employees employed? That's what our decision was. So I've had to crunch these numbers, I've had to do what the city is going to be facing on a smaller scale. I do every year work with a large marketing operations budget. We're a multimillion-dollar company, so I mean, that doesn't come with the eases of just your personal budget. So I do have a little bit of experience in that. I do know what's going through. I forgot what I was going to say now, distracted. Here you go.
Dick Coos, three-year term. I've dealt with budgets probably since I was in high school. I had my personal budget, my family budget, and now, as a ranger with the Forest Service for 14 years, as a ranger, I dealt with a budget every year. I had to make the budget, and at the end of the year, I had to come out with a penny, because that's what they required. I had to spend it. Since then, I've dealt with the Borough Assembly budget, and the budgets are always balanced. You look at it, you try to narrow it down, but you balance it with the city. Once again, for the years I've been with the city, you go through it line by line, and the mayor sitting out there knows how I do it. It's line by line, and I don't put up with any nonsense, and when a few, you lose a few. But it's, the budgets are balanced, and right now, the city's budget is balanced. We've got a reserves. This coming year's going to be tough, because the reserves are going to really down, and I see the number again.
Mark Flora, two-year seat. My budget experience is both in the private and the public sector. In the private sector, since the age of 22, I've been responsible for my own livelihood, my own budgets, so I've had to do this without a safety net. I know what the debt and the risk is, and I know what it feels like to have to manage that and be successful doing that. On the public side, I try to be very cognizant and very respectful of the fact that this is other people's money, this is the community's money, and I have a fiduciary responsibility to be a good steward of that money and look for where we can use those funds to the benefit of the entire community. Thank you.
I don't think I really have experience with major budgets. I like to look at budgets from the small end. I started my fence company 16 years ago with a borrowed 600 bucks, and I'm really proud that now, 16 years later, that was an essential service in this town that got those canneries online by June 1st, and that was like an incredible deadline for us to be able to pull off. Like, if I hadn't come from South Florida and started that business here, it wouldn't have happened. There'd been no possible way, but we have that essential service in our town now. That makes me -- That makes me super proud. I've also have two other businesses. And this is like a really crazy time to work with budgets and drag three businesses through a coronavirus. Sometimes it's bad when you have one thing to think about. But I've created three different things to think about and kind of three different industries. So it's really got me busy about thinking.
Jay Matani. I've dealt with budgets since 1979, first in New York City between '79 and '86, working for an outfit called Armel Enterprises. I was thrown in as a rookie to cut fat. I have had to deal with an $8 million budget to make sure that everybody in the organization with 17 employees employed, making sure that money was held in reserves. We were always asked to keep $2 million in reserves, making sure that the business was profitable and cutting where we were able to continue for years to come. And after '86 to now, I've had two companies. I'm still here, still in business, because I've had to manage my budgets depending upon what the reality is on the ground. Reality, between '97 and 2011, things were great. Reality right now is we've got to, without any business, use the reserves to where I am.
Dave Keifer, three-year city council seat. Well, on the public side, I have spent more hours than I care to remember doing city and borough budgets over the last decade plus. I have dealt with the $200 million budgets. And I have worked to cut those back as much as we possibly can with also maintaining services that everyone in the community tells me they want. And that's been a challenge. But it's interesting because about, I want to say, seven years ago, my wife bought a downtown business. And for all the challenges in having to cut a public budget, there is no greater challenge than having to cut a business budget when you are faced with what we were faced with this year. I can tell you from a matter of fact, I've learned more in the last three months than all the time doing the city budget. Because it has not been easy, and it's been frankly scary.
The next question, we'll start with Mr. Echohawk. City infrastructure, delivering essential services and maintaining our infrastructure will continue to be a high need within the city. What are your ideas on financing these items? Could be wastewater, water, sewers, solid waste, given the current economic situation?
Yes, this is Grant Echohawk. And this is actually something I've been very vocal about throughout my entire campaign and something that I've, everybody that will listen as I've, I've made these recommendations is that we know that we're facing some economic challenges. We know that it's going to take us a year or two, maybe longer, to get back to baseline. So that means we need to start making decisions today that we would, that we can make today rather than wait six months, a year down the road and be forced to make them then. And where I would recommend everybody within the, within the city is to take a look at your, your home budget. See what dollars are being sent out of your, out of your household that are being sent out of our community, whether it be video streaming, your, your Amazon account. Where you can, take that money, reallocate it back into the community, reallocate it to our local businesses, reallocate it to any services that you think you can pick up. And if enough of us do that, that adds hundreds of thousands of dollars back into our economy. Thank you.
Mary Stevenson, two-year seat. I would first start with a list, an updated list as to the projects that have been pending for the last 10 years. I'd also say, if it was on the books to be done, where is the budget today? If you have a reserve in a special fund, can't we take some of that and start implementing? We also have two RFPs offering revenue stream into Ketchikan's budget. And I'd like to know what that is. The only one I know about is $204 million. That revenue is going to definitely ease the budget somewhere so that we can use those funds that we now become available into these other immediate projects. Thank you.
Joey Telson, three-year seat. So I would say that investing in our fiber optics, in the small business grants, pulling in the purse strings, review the financial forecast, past practices that we've utilized. And that would be, you know, polyannial reports, things that actually reported on where money was spent and where it could be moved. And then, of course, instigate community volunteerism, and then locate resources, whether it be on a federal level, a state level, or just within our own municipality. Those are things that, you know, as a single parent, being desperate for trying to find a way to pay the bills, I am very resourceful. Thanks.
Lisa Scarborough. It seems to me that the first thing we have to do is prioritize. We have to figure out what needs to be fixed first for infrastructure, whether it's the water filtration, its roads, its bridges, whatever it might be, that the city is in control of. We need to prioritize them first. Where the money's going to come from? Well, you know, that's going to be the juggling situation right there. I wonder sometimes if some of the fees we get from the ports during the true season, whenever that might happen to come back, can be reallocated to infrastructure. I know that the majority of that money has to be used on the ports, but we have a lot of other things that need to be dealt with.
Abby Bradbury, three-year seat. The real reality is, we have to figure out how to find money outside of our community. We can't continue to tax or, you know, ask our residents who are struggling to give more and more money to, you know, take care of a 40% deficit of sales tax. So we need to go outside. We need to find short-term solutions in the economy. So is that remote workers? Is that bolstering and supporting the maricultural expansion that's been happening lately, especially through the pandemic? Those are things we need to look at doing in the short term and then finding a long-term plan of another source of income. Is that supporting the mining industry or timber industry or working with the borough to help kind of move forward some programs or thoughts that they have? And then the last thing is, I have to obviously chime in on the cruise lines here. I believe the cruise lines will come to the table and can work with us in financing infrastructure issues and nonprofit issues in the future. But it's going to take people willing to sit down at the table and talk with them.
Dick Kuest, three-year term. The next one and a half to two years are the biggest issues. City has reserves, and we can look at how we can juggle those reserves. That means they're going to be short for the next year, maybe a year and a half. We also need to look at our five-year capital project plan. And some of those are going to go away, or they're going to be delayed. Let's put it that way. We can reduce travel and training. There's a number of things in that budget we can look at, and we just got to have the guts to trim them back. Thank you.
Mark Flora, I'm running for the two-year seat. I asked for an early budget work session that we had in July so that we could get on top of this earlier than we normally do. The council made it clear to staff that whatever we've done in the past on the budget simply isn't the method that we can use anymore. The next one to two years, you are looking at mostly a status quo. The city does have a list of capital projects that we can look to. When we talk about near-term funding, I would like to see money coming from the visitor industry that the community has autonomy over. Most of those funds are restricted. I'm willing to look at any model and talk to anybody willing to have that conversation so that we can look to the visitor industry to partially help fill that gap. Then long-term, we'll be looking at other things such as timber, mining, mariculture. But those are more on the long-term side. Thank you.
Spencer Strasberg, three-year seat. Trying to find revenues during a pandemic time is like super difficult. It might be different if it was just us that was hurting here and we're going to go find some revenue somewhere else. But if everybody's hurting, there's just no revenue around. And so that's why we're already in this boat. I'm glad we have some reserves to get us through. But I think right now, most of the business approaches are to take a stance where we start working on in-house stuff. How do we clean ourselves up so when we do get back to business, we're ready to hit the ground running? One of the things we need is advisory boards and some sort of port authority or something like that. We need to set that up ourself. We should have set it up 30 years ago. That's the part that's been missing. I think that this whole process is a little bit flawed when we sent out RFPs, but we didn't know what we wanted. I think that's where all the confusion comes in. I think that's why nobody really understands what's, what we're going to give up and what we're not going to give up, because we didn't know what we needed in the first place.
Jay Matani, two-year seat. I'd, if elected, I'd go to the staff to go through the books and see what reserves we have, where we can cut the fat so that we maintain the infrastructure, salaries, and services for this community by moving those funds around from reserves and other departments that don't need them immediately. Cutting the fat, cutting consultancy, cutting surveys, that money can go back into the budget. Like, we spent $685,000 to have a lease set up for the hospital. That could have been done for much less money. Monies like that. Then the cruise lines are willing to work with us, the CVP funds. We go to them, ask them for a waiver so that we can put it in the budget and use it. If they say yes, you can, because they are willing to talk with us, we do it. If they say no, ask them, can we use it as a loan? Use that money for the next year and a half, two years, and put the money back over the years. That's how you manage the budget, by cutting the fat and being innovative. Thank you.
Dave Keifer, I'm running for the three-year seat. You know, one of the easiest things in the world is to say, well, let's go and do X, Y, or Z. What's really going to happen? You know, what is really going to happen out there? The cavalry is not coming in the next two years. So the reality is, what's going to happen here is we're going to make this work, because in Ketchikan, we always managed to make it work. We always figure out some way to do it. We've done that whenever, this is not the first time the industry's had a problem. We've had problems with timber. We've had problems with fishing. We've had problems with mining. It's our history to do that. One of the good things that has happened, and yes, this is not going to save us entirely, but I personally have seen a lot more locals spending a lot more money locally, in local restaurants, in local stores. And Grant's right, if we cut back our internet addictions and our, and our online shopping additions, it helps a lot. And a small amount of money can help a business like that.
Riley Gass, running for a three-year seat. I think it's going to take a lot of brainstorming and hearing out the community. There's not one answer, like everybody said. Some of the areas we can look on, one area that I'd like to focus on if I get elected would be how we can make Ketchikan more commercial fishing friendly. I know it's been a bad year for the fishermen and, you know, times have been better. But I'd like to really reach out to that community, ask them what we can do, whether it be with the ports, with the fish processing, with the water rates, which we know has been an issue for a long time. So let's focus a little bit more on them. Other ways, we need to just brainstorm. I mean, as Dick said earlier, any ways where we can cut back unnecessary regulation to allow businesses to prosper more in this time, give incentives, maybe even for, this is more of a borough thing, but if we take some properties that are undeveloped around and do a, I forget the term, but where you say, okay, if you buy out this property, we'll give you no property tax for 10 years, whatever that's called. You know, lots of different ways we can look at. So another way I was thinking is, we always hear about this melintabumun, maybe we can talk to those guys some more.
With each forum, we have had a soft skills question. And here is yours. This is kind of a quick hit. You need to think on your feet. Please tell us how you are successful working with and/or managing teams and how you would do that moving forward.
How I am successful in work, Mary Stevenson. Thank you very much. Joey's part of the team here. Two-year seat. How am I successful in organizing teams and working together? As a tour guide, working with 29 passengers in two and a half hours, that's management. That's teamwork when there's children, strollers, suitcases. Over the road, 11 days, national parks, there's a lot of team effort. And I feel with my marketing skills, with my sales and also tour guiding, I am a team player, and I look forward to working with the constituents and trying to engage the community and city hall with resolving some of our issues. Thank you.
Joey Telson, three-year term. Well, I have a lot of experience of leadership. Like I said, I'm auxiliary president, union chapter president here locally. I'm, I'm famous for organizing. Organizing is a huge thing for me. Anything that's going to require where, if I can't do it on my own, I'm going to enlist others to do it. A majority of what I've done with my kids is I make them roll up their sleeve and get in there. I offer incentives. I believe in teamwork. I believe that we all bring something to the table. And we may be diverse, we may have disagreements, but I believe in problem resolution. And I believe that the best course of action that we have for each other is to make sure that we put aside our differences for the greater good. Thanks.
Lisa Scarborough. I have spent the last 25 years working with different nonprofits in the community, including getting four of them launched from the very beginning, which is an organizing board, 501(c)(3) bylaws, working with a group of people to do this for four of our local nonprofits. And been, spent many years on those nonprofit boards. I run a nonprofit right now, so I work with a board, a group of 10 people, just keeping things going, improving services, growing the budget. I believe I'm a team player. I look and I listen, and I bring that to the table.
Abby Bradbury, three-year term. This is probably my biggest strength. Anybody who's in the tourism industry understands that if you don't have collaboration or teamwork, you will not succeed. I personally am the liaison between outside companies and our company. I work with global companies, local operators, the government, local governments, nonprofits, industry organizations, independent travelers, writers and so forth. That's how we worked to be successful in the industry. So I have a huge strength there. My job is planning and working with a team to figure out, how can we make the lumberjacks, you know, get a show through? How can we get enough people through? How can our dock team get people to the show site? That's my everyday job. That's what I live. That's what I absolutely love. So I believe I can bring a good experience there.
Dick Kuest, three-year term. Been working as a team all your life. That's the way you get things done. When I was Forest Service, I was part of a firefighting team. So I don't enjoy, I would enjoy being in California right now, I'll tell you. But it's part of the job, you know, working with nonprofits, the Lions Club, when I was the president of this Chamber of Commerce, the group works as a team to get through your budgets, to get your projects done. I even view the city council, it's a team. We don't always agree, but we end up getting the job done in the end. And sometimes you're a leader, sometimes you're not the leader, but by getting, by having the same goal, you end up accomplishing the job in the end. Thank you.
Mark Flora, two-year council seat. So I steer my own ship, but I have to be very cognizant of the fact that I'm responsible for my crew, and they're responsible for me. So it really is about listening. The best ideas are the best ideas. They aren't my ideas or another person's ideas. I'd like to have a discussion that focuses on the merit of what is the goal and how do we get there together? That's what the city council's all about. And quite frankly, that's what business is all about. That's actually a similarity that the private and the public sector have together. I have to be very respectful of that in both my public and private life. I have people that I work with whose livelihoods depend on it, and I have a community that I serve that's depending on me. Thank you.
Well, I think probably my biggest attribute to the team is I have the ability to trust that it'll be okay if, if we fail at something. And then I'm, I'm also going to call it out. I, I don't always like how I've had to call stuff out at city council because I don't work around these guys enough to be able to build them up on the other end. And I only have enough time to sit here and tear them down. And that's probably been one of the biggest disappointments. I wouldn't want to do it to anybody that way. And it's, I also think I'm really good at finding team members. I've had to be. I quit school with 11 credits. I had ADHD. If I didn't assemble a good team around If I didn't assemble a good team around me, I wouldn't be successful today. That was the key to my survival was other people. Finding those people, and now that's why I've really identified, we've made some mistakes in not putting other people in town in more advisory positions. We need more eyes on the scene. We've eliminated it down to no diversity and that's why we're having troubles.
Teamwork is critical for any corporation or any industry or any city or municipality to succeed. You assemble a team when you're tackling a project, you compartmentalize it. You're in different areas to different members of the team. Then each of them works on it, researches it, you come to the table, you discuss it. You take the best of the best ideas, make them cohesive together and come up with a decision. We might disagree, but at the end of the night, you come up with the best solution or the best project to present to your company or to your city or your municipality. Thank you.
Dave Kuyfer, I'm seeking the three-year seat on the city council. My father was a grumpy commercial fisherman. My grandfather was a grumpy commercial fisherman. My great-grandfather, they all were. And they were worse, they were trollers. There is no more person who is absolutely determined to do everything themselves. I watched my father sink a boat. He did not want to call the, the Coast Guard. He was going to fix it himself. We were going to save this boat out at Kageani that was sinking in the middle of the night. And he wasn't going to call anyone because damn it, that's what you do. So I had to learn that that's not how you do it. That you need to find other people to help you. You know, I have no problem asking anyone in this room for help if I need it tomorrow. That's something my family just does not do. But I had to learn that. That's a very valuable lesson. You need to ask for help when you need it. Because everyone here is going to be able to help. And that's how we're going to get through all the situations we face at the council. And we look around the table, we don't fight, we help each other.
Riley Gass, running for a three-year seat. I'll give two quick examples, real quick. One example for me personally is through referee in basketball. It's kind of my side job that I do. And the best example would be with, working with the younger referees who don't quite know what they're doing or whatever. Sometimes it can be a handful, so I kind of took on the senior role of doing that. Another specific example is I worked for three years for the school district maintenance. And my job in the summer was to take a crew of four to six high school kids and teach them how to mow the grass at all the schools. So working with high school kids was a little difficult. But for this particular thing, I see this as kind of a way for, I see me in this position as a way to bring a little more communication to the community and the council. Because, you know, I think everybody has good intentions, but at the end of the day, it's obvious to me that the will of the people and the council's understanding don't always match up. So I want to really take the lead on bringing the message of the people and on the other end of it, communicating what's going on to the people from the council. Thanks.
Grant Echohawk, two-year seat. So when I worked for, in the corporate environment, you know, one of my principal duties was to hire, train, develop business leaders. That was, that was principally what I did. I'd worked on a bunch of other projects. But the only way that this happens is through collaboration. Collaborate with the HR department, collaborate with finance, collaborate with operations, collaborate with every single piece of the business to ensure that as we're guiding people along, that they're doing it as effectively as possible, but as well being open up to, being open to new ideas. So sometimes I'll have a peer or colleague that had a great idea, fantastic, let's do it that way and let's improve this process. While at the credit union, we opened up three locations while I was there. One in Huna, one in Heideberg and one in Cake. I was involved in that from the ground up, had to collaborate again with all these different departments, with community leaders to get these operations off the ground. And as well, we started a contact center for any of you that were, have been with the credit union for a while, you know that we didn't have that a couple of years ago. Now we do. And again, from the ground up, making these things happen. Thank you.
We have two questions remaining, of which both of those questions are two-minute answers. We've had a request for a brief restroom break. And I was wondering if anyone would like to refill their beverages perhaps? We could take a quick three-minute, five-minute max break for some of our candidates to use the restroom and then we'll be back. Okay, so this set of questions is specifically designed to defer to, to defer to the position of the incumbents in terms of them not being able to reveal certain items about the port RFP. So therefore, the first question will be to Joey Jean. There'll be a set of questions for people who are seeking newly elected office. And there will be another question for the people that are currently incumbents so that they can avoid revealing anything that should not be revealed due to the RFP. Does that make sense? The whole goal here is not to favor one or another, but rather to not put anyone in an uncomfortable situation. So I'm going to go down, nu, 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 and then we'll come back and take the answers on the different question from the incumbents. Okay, I hope that's all right with everyone. Okay, for the people running for newly elected office, the idea of privatizing or not our port has been a big topic of discussion for many months. What is your position on this idea? And please provide concrete examples as to why you have this opinion. And this is two minutes, by the way.
Joey Jean Telson, three-year. So as I've been gathering information, a lot of the information I initially received was from opinions in the community. And I am not a person that works off of community, community opinions. I work off of facts, I work off of research. And so at this moment in time, after watching council meeting last night and some key points of not having all of the information, a list of pros and cons, as well as the environmental effects, as well as the financial report card of either company. I can't make a sound decision on what would be my, my side that I would take. I would rather have all of the information out on the table as well as look at the improvements that each would be able to provide. I just take into account everything before I make a sound decision. And the other part of that whole take is that it's not based on emotion. It's based on facts, it's based on accurate information and not being misled by people's fear. Fear is huge, distrust of previous practices. And I don't want to work off of that. I want to work solely on getting the information and do what's best for everybody before I make a sound decision. And that's where I'm at right now. And if I get that information, then I would be one to say, put it out to the voters.
Lisa Scarborough. I don't have a decision on this either because we don't have the facts. That's the bottom line. Unless you're on the city council or work for the city, we don't have all the facts. We don't really know what the best interest of the community is. I just want, whatever decision is made, whoever's managing our ports, that it's going to be the best decision for our community. Financially, just the general community having access to the port, those employees that work for the city, that'll work for the port, what happens with them, all of those things, factors need to weigh into any decision that's made. So I don't have anything, I, I couldn't make an informed opinion right now because I certainly don't have all the facts. But I want what's best for our community. That's all that matters to me, is that we make the best choice for Ketchikan.
All right, so if anybody watched city council meeting, I'm pretty sure, last night, you're pretty, pretty sure you know where I stand or the past six months of my speaking. I personally believe the city should vote no to both bids and control or continue management of our port. Not only has COVID introduced a whole new sector of how we're going to operate, but Ward Cove has also stepped up and has kind of filled in a need that we needed at the time. I firmly believe that we can work collaboratively with the cruise lines and CLIA to create a partnership that will generate revenue for the community and the needs of our community. If I were elected and the opinions of the council was not to go that direction, I would firmly stand to support our local business. We've been talking a lot about local businesses tonight. So this is a great opportunity for our city to stand up and support a local business that does know how to do it. Quite frankly, they have been doing it for us for free. So let's support the local guys. But I don't think we should go that direction. Our port has brought a great plan forward of working with Survey Point Holding under a different type of operations. And I firmly believe they could help advise us in moving forward and helping us in the financial area in terms of how we could move forward and create profit off of the industry. Oh, sorry, Abby Bradbury, three-year term.
Spencer Strasburg. You know, this is, this has got me a little split here. I, I was one of the first people that said, hey, we need to find somebody else's money to build our port. Giving up management wasn't really what I had in mind. I'm not even 100% certain what I had in mind at that time. I just knew that Fort Lauderdale pulled it off because some of my research that I'd done. I've since done other research and found out we're making tons of mistakes. I, that's why I was kind of hopeful that some other folks might help us, lead us in the right direction. I'm, I'm 100% certain that this is flawed because of our mistakes. We go into a deal not even knowing what we want. And we said, hey, you guys make us just a bunch of RFPs. You guys want to do preferential, you guys want to do concessionaires? We don't care. And then when they decided to probably take whatever was best for them, which I would expect them to do if they're smart business people, they, they came, they came here, like I'm really, I'm disgusted after watching some of our people and some of the way that we're talking to these visitors. That's what they are. We asked these visitors to come here and give us some proposals or help us with our port or whatever. And then we demonize them and say, but they're here to steal our stuff. No, they're not. They're here to give us the RFP that we asked for. We haven't listened to any of it. None of us really have any idea what's contained in that stuff. And that's no way to do business. If anything, we're alienating these guys in the future if we ever need their help. I think we need help figuring this out from someone else, whether it's them, somebody else. But to sit here and to say, nobody but local, I don't want any help, that's not collaboration. Well, every one of them sit here and talk about collaboration. I'm sorry, I'm raising my voice again. That's that fighter part. I, I'm sorry, I don't want to do that. I don't want to look aggressive in this thing, but I just want to pull my hair out sometimes because we say one thing and we do another. And we just made an ordinance against discrimination. And it makes me, it really upsets me when this board has people get up and violate that ordinance and then they don't even do anything about it.
People know my opinion loudly for months. I am not in favor of giving out a lease or giving anybody the management responsibility for 20 years or 30 years of our port. This belongs to the future generations of the kids of Ketchikan and the present generation of Ketchikan. This is a revenue stream that we already have. This management team wants to come in and harness the same revenue stream and dangle a carrot in front of us. It's not Global Ports, it's not Survey Point. This is a revenue stream that already exists. So let's set up a board, an independent team that will harness the revenue for ourselves and keep it for ourselves and educate our kids to take over responsibility and generate this income. Keep it home. Make a board that will harness this revenue. That revenue stream is already there. If there was no revenue stream, these RFPs wouldn't be here. They wouldn't be interested in us. We have the 200 million, the 300 million or whatever it is, the revenue stream. Harness it correctly, form a business team. Government does not know how to get revenue. It's businesses like Microsoft, Amazon. You form a team that will harness and make sure the revenue is kept here and made bigger. Thank you.
Riley Gass, running for the three-year seat. I'll start with the short answer. No, we shouldn't sell it out and more so, we shouldn't sell it out to a global company. A few things. One, we got to step back and look at what's happened since the time of this RFP started. So much has happened in the world ending Ketchikan. The big one, Ward Cove, they're now set up for two mega ships a day. My understanding is that's about 10,000 people. Obviously, we want the people downtown as well. Well, COVID-19 hit, wiped out the tour industry completely for 2020. They made no revenue. And my understanding is the whole start of this was because the tour industry is transitioning into these mega ships. And basically, we went, oh man, we better get our port set up for these mega ships. Well, we already know for three and a half million dollars, we can expand berth three to get two mega ships from there. We got to slow down, see what happens with this tour industry. Nobody knows, is it going to come back next year? Is it going to be back in five years? How long till it, till it bounces back fully? So pump the brakes, see what happens, keep it local. If we give this thing away on a 30-year deal, it would be a nightmare, especially to an outside company. Let's say it doesn't bounce back, which I think it will. But if it doesn't, then we're into this big multimillion-dollar lease and there's, there's no tour industry and we have that huge debt. So we got to keep it local, keep it working for Ketchikan, keep the money here. If they want to bring in five or 10 million or I don't know how many, Ketchikan's not set up for that. We need to be smart and utilize that 1.2-ish number of 1.2 million passengers per year. Keep all that money that we possibly can here working for Ketchikan. So final point, if we do sell it out, I think we want to look to our friends and neighbors here in Ketchikan rather than across the globe. Thank you.
Grant Echohawk, two-year seat. I, I think, I think some of the challenges with this is, and we've had multiple discussions about it, is, is the perception of a lack of transparency and that causes a problem. That, that immediately puts the people of Ketchikan in the position to where they're, to where we feel like decisions are being made without our input, without our say, and us being forced to make decisions that we do not have all the facts on. And I think that, that is, is one of the major problems in this entire process. And, and, and I do appreciate those that, that did speak up at last night's, at last night's meeting, who did say, you know what, is this really, really needed that we, that we send this into an executive session? You know, it's just absolutely vital that we have, again, with, with a 30-year commitment, that is a long time. And we need to have all the information as a community. Now, as somebody who's been in business for as long as I have, I appreciate that you cannot disclose every single piece of a business strategy. It, it can put you at a disadvantage. I get that. That, that, that makes complete sense. I also know that sometimes the best business decision is not the popular one, but it's still a good business decision. That, that's how business, that's how business is done. And, and change itself shouldn't fear us. But, you know, but at the end of the day, we cannot make responsible decisions if we don't have all the information. And that's really what it comes down to. My initial concerns are that a, a, a large corporation has a responsibility to their shareholders, which may not align with Ketchikan interests. And the other concern that I have is that a large corporation is going to continue to leverage their interests throughout the world for the next 30 years. So again, when this contract is up, there may be less, there'll be less competition in the marketplace, which makes us in a less than ideal negotiating position. So those are my initial concerns with the information that I have. Thank you.
Okay, so, oh, you didn't answer yet? I'm so sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
Mary Stevenson, two-year seat. Last night's meeting was a good example of poor leadership. Two finalists of the RFPs were there. They have given the community their proposal. One did not release any revenue streams, so it's speculation as to what Survey Point is offering on the table. Global did. Not only did they put out basic facts, but they are offering the community 204 million. The mayor made reference last night that there might be a second option, that we might come to the table with our own option. And I put on the table last night, then bring your representative to the community and let's see your PowerPoint presentation in how the city believes they can remain independent without revenue stream from Survey Point or Global Point. Because that's important. If you can do it, why haven't you been doing it for the last 25 years? I don't think you can be independent right now with a $160 million deficit. right now with a $160 million deficit to dismiss any of these revenue streams that are being given to us as a gift, no strings attached, that will ease our budget. Secondly, that second option on the table seems to me like there's a deal being cut behind the scenes and it entails Survey Point, the local team. You can't play favorites in this thing. You have to present three proposals to the stakeholders and let us decide what is best. All of this is speculation right now because we haven't seen the proposals. You haven't been honest with us. And last night's meeting was a disaster. And you're giving a false pretense that you've made up your mind and that's not fair. The community owns those stocks. Thank you.
Okay, so again, two minutes. This is a different question for the incumbents. However, if you so desire, you may address the previous question that the new candidates addressed as well. So some international cruise models are suggesting that future cruise trips to Ketchikan may need to implement a plan in which travelers disembark, go to a specific tour directly, and then immediately reboard their ship. This seems to create a situation where local brick-and-mortar shops might lose out on a significant amount of revenue. So the question is, as a city council member, who would you collaborate with? And do you have any ideas on overcoming this possible sales tax revenue loss as it pertains to balancing the budget? That's the thesis question of the evening. There's been one at every forum.
Wow.
I need the mic. Okay, so, okay, so if you've read the news, some international cruise models have suggested that future cruise trips to Ketchikan, they might need to implement a plan in which travelers disembark, go to a specific tour directly, and then directly reboard their ship. So this seems to create a situation where local brick-and-mortar shops might lose out on revenue. So the question is, as a city council member, who would you collaborate with? Or what ideas do you have to overcome a possible sales tax revenue loss as it pertains to balancing the budget?
Dave Keifer, three-year seat. First, I want to really briefly answer the first question. My mother was not my father. She always said, get all the information. My father tended to want to go off, the first thing, boom. My mother said, get all the facts. That's what the RFP process has been. I agree, the public needs more information. And we're working on that. Our hands are somewhat tied, but the reality is the public needs to know more. And actually, you know what? If the council decides that it wants to actually go with either of the proposals as opposed to not doing anything at all, I don't have a problem with going to a vote because it is 20 years. It is 30 years. I don't have a problem with that. Okay, the other question. How much time do I have? Oh, perfect, perfect. So, yeah. That puts us in a bad situation. If that is the cruise industry's way to deal with COVID, we're in trouble. They also have talked about things like cruises to nowhere. Ship will come up here, visit Mr. Fiori's glacier bay, won't stop in town. They've also talked about, you know, can we have ports that are totally bubbles? We need to allow anyone into. Those are all, as far as I'm concerned, really horrible for this community. And so it's up to us to basically meet with the cruise lines, meet with government officials, meet with whoever we possibly can, anybody, and that's anyone. In fact, anyone in this room wants to talk about, I'm happy to talk to you about that. Because we really need, any of those options are devastating. And we've kind of survived not very well through the first year. If we have two or three years of what they're proposing, we are, not just the city government, I don't care about the city government, we're looking at businesses going out of business. We're looking at people leaving Ketchikan. We're looking at a bad situation. So, yeah, if that's the best they got, it's not good enough for me.
Dick Koos, three-year term. Concerning the first question, let me just upfront state, council had made no decision. There's still disagreement amongst us, what's going to happen. And we're looking at the facts and we're listening to the people. I would like to see if the people would just review the purpose and goals that were set for that project. Some of the conditions have changed, COVID, and no cruise ships and things like that. So things have changed and we're trying to take a look at that too. But the one thing is transparency, it has to be there. You will get it one way or another. And I'm going to make one other comment. That's a 90 to $100 million asset down there. This community is not getting a return on that asset the way it's working right now. We need to do something different. I won't say whether which of the three we need to be looking at. That's the two private proposals and the city just retains it. But we need to do something different. Concerning the question, yeah, it's horrible. What are we going to do with no tours? With the few people that have tours in town, they're going to be controlled very closely. So it means a loss of asset. Making up for the Austin City sales tax, we're going to have to tighten up our belt and look for new businesses that come in here and have people that are grocery local stores. It's going to be a tough situation. The council will have a tough call.
Mark Florham, running for the two-year seat. In answer to the first question, the RFP, Section 7.6.1 defined the terms of confidentiality. Somebody already spoke to the need to keep things confident at times. I don't recall any objection prior to the RFPs being sent out. And it would have been helpful to the council to have had that information, that the public was unhappy. Because once the RFPs were issued, it became much more difficult to have the level of transparency that the community wants. That's why last night I asked the city attorney what the mechanism is. Because if we breach our own RFP, it's unethical and it's not fair to the proposers and it doesn't reflect well on the council or the community. In answer to the second question, I actually can understand part of the rationale of the lines because they don't want an episode of COVID outbreak on their ships. So I understand from a safety standpoint. I've already met with three different independent tour operators who have said, I can do the safe protocols just like they can. We have a local company who's received CARES Act money to provide COVID clean training. The port belongs to everybody. The independent tour people, the people who don't have tour businesses, the port belongs to everybody. And I think as sales tax decline, we need to have a serious discussion how we can have some money that comes off of that port that isn't constrained by dockage, wharfage, CPV, tonnage clause restrictions. Everybody here talks about not giving up control of the port. If we don't control the money to the general fund, we don't actually control the port.
Okay, in the interest of time, here's another quick-hit question. It is a simple yes or no answer. So we'll start right here. Have you read what the Ketchikan Municipal Code says about transfers of funds from the Port Enterprise Fund to the General Fund?
Yes.
Not for Ketchikan, I think for Key West and maybe Charleston, South Carolina. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Maybe.
Yes.
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 Thank you. There are a couple of other submitted questions, which I will email you on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce out of respect to the person that submitted those. We don't have time this evening. I would greatly appreciate it, as would that individual, if you would take the time to answer that email and make sure that that person knows your stance on that issue. So it's time for the final question. We've done this, and this will be one minute, okay? One minute. We've done this at every forum because it's interesting, humorous at times, and just generally entertaining. It gives a little glimpse. So we'd like to know, tell us one thing about you personally that people may not know about you.
My wife thinks that I'm Forrest Gump. Because in my time away from Ketchikan, I have had a remarkable number of run-ins with famous people. I used the urinal next to JFK Junior. I actually interviewed Donald Trump. I've talked to like four US presidents. She'll say something and I'll just say, oh, yeah, I met that person in 1986 or whatever. And she'll look at me like I'm crazy. And maybe I am, maybe I am. But, you know, yep, I get around. Oh, I'm sorry. Dave Keifer, three-year seat. And I just appreciate your support.
Riley Gass, I guess I would just say that a few years ago, I probably never would have imagined I'd be up here running for council, but here I am.
Grant Echohawk, two-year seat. I'm terrified of heights, terrified. But I still take the prop planes around town and around the state. And when the wind hits, I say, good Lord, and I hang on. And I still travel around the world wherever I can. I've been in the tallest building in the world. So I've ziplined and I've always come with the philosophy of if the thrill of it overrode the terror of it, I'd do it again. And that hasn't happened a whole lot of times. So, thank you.
As a record producer, I've had the opportunity to receive accolades, letters, and such from those people who have received a selection of songs sung by the original artists singing about everyone's favorite city, San Francisco, Southern California, and New York. It was a no-brainer. Tourists loved it. So I have letters from Mikhail Gorbachev, Rear Admiral Bitov, Don Johnson, George Bush, Al Gore, autographs from Tony Bennett, Dionne Warwick, Vic D'Amone, and so on. So I'm quite famous. I was on QVC with my product and did very well. And I was also on Rosie O'Donnell and Howie Mandel Show. Mary Stevenson, two-year seat.
I'm responsible for the parking ticket being $20 now. My name is Joey Telson. And I had submitted a proposal to the city council and to the city manager here in town to generate revenue for Ketchikan. And I tried the parking meter deal of the smart meters and they said, well, Joey, we got rid of the meters in '89 because, you know, we're a struggling community. And I said, fine, raise the parking ticket from $10 to $20. It didn't require them reprogramming or nothing. And by golly, if they didn't do it, and it wasn't even a month later, I got my first $20 ticket because I didn't move my car. I didn't move my car at the police department within the two-hour time limit. So there you have it. I should have got free parking.
Grandfathered in. Lisa Scarborough. My husband and I are very, very different, night to day. It's just crazy. But one of our greatest things is we work together doing projects. And most people probably would know that because it's not the most enjoyable experience. We, again, are diametrically opposed in the way we do things. But we always get things done and it's always fun to look back and say, boy, that worked out really well.
This is a pretty hard question. Most of you know I'm pretty open book. If you ask me a question, I'll tell you. I don't really have a problem. Oh, Abby Bradbury, sorry. Sorry, let's start there, through your seat. I will say, through this campaign, I have learned that I am not much of a public speaker. I really like to be behind the scenes, doing the logistics and planning and letting other people take the shining star moment. So that was probably one of the biggest things.
Dick Koos, three-year seat. Really, I'm probably, I don't like to get out in the public and do a lot of things, so it's probably weird that I even do what I do. But I enjoy working with people. And one of the things, the fun things we've done, my wife and I, and you'll probably surprise you because I'm kind of cautious, is that we jumped out of an airplane four or five years ago in Hawaii. And it is a beautiful thing to do. Just flying down, floating down like a bird and seeing what's underneath you, it's great. Try it sometime.
Mark Florham, running for the two-year seat. So in 2007, my son and I got to go to Konayama on the exchange, which is the coolest thing ever, if you get to do it. And one of the Ketchikan students, who I'll never forgive, somehow had me branded as Super Mario. And so for the entire time that we were in Japan, I heard doo-doo-doo, doo-doo-doo from many young Japanese students. And then we got to leave Japan. So I thought, that's cool, that's over, and I'm never going back. The next year, I was on the Konayama Board. I went to the welcome dinner over at Shouen Bar. And there were two young Japanese students sitting behind me. And I heard doo-doo-doo, doo-doo-doo. So I am forever in Japan, Super Mario.
I kind of feel like there's nothing that nobody knows about me. I've been so transparent. I think that maybe I should say why. I've always been transparent because when I was young, I didn't really have a voice. And I wasn't very transparent. And I just kind of made a commitment to always be transparent. And so that's why you see me be overly transparent. I thought I would take a shot at this political game five years ago because it doesn't fit. It'd be the hardest thing in the world to be transparent and get a political seat. By nature of the game, I'm a strategist. And I realized, these guys can't be honest with you or they'll alienate like 50% of the voters. So that's why they're not as transparent as I am. And I don't even know if I'm supposed to be in this game. But if you guys want to see me in this game to shake it up, vote for me.
Jay Matarani, three-year city council seat. Seek your permission and your vote. People that don't know about me is I'm a wolf in sheep's clothing. I'm approachable, I'll approach you gently. But you end up hurting somebody that I know or don't know, disincriminate against somebody I know or don't know, be a bully to somebody I don't know.[1739.28]